This meeting is a meeting of the West Yaga Local School District Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the West Yaga Local School District's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. You call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
We rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, so we're moving on to programs, reports, and presentations.
There's a request from our choir department to take a trip that would give our students an opportunity to spread their wings a little bit, so Ms. Wise can, you would give us an overview of that tonight?
Great, thank you. Thank you. First, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'd like to start by sharing that the high school choir performed at the Ohio Music Educators Association Large Group Adjudicated Event on Friday night. This is the music version of a state assessment, and our students did a spectacular job, so I just wanted to share that great news, and we are excited to attend again next year with more growth and improvement. And speaking of growth, the West Yaga Choir Program is in a period of redevelopment, and I believe that travel will serve as a great incentive to improve our recruitment and retention in the program. The trip I am presenting tonight includes three days in New York City and includes many opportunities for student learning, for sightseeing, and also for student bonding with fellow choir members. This trip will be open to grades eight through 12 that are enrolled in choir next school year. This trip was designed by Steve Taylor at Noteworthy Tours. This is the exact same travel agent and company that recently planned the Disney trip for our marching band. Educational highlights include a choir performance, a Broadway workshop, and a Broadway show, and additionally, a visit to the 9/11 Memorial and Museum. Pending approval of repertoire, the choir will perform at St. John the Divine Cathedral near Central Park. This is one of the world's largest Gothic cathedrals in the world, so it's a very unique and once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for students to perform at this venue. Students will have a standalone performance on the first day we arrive in New York City. Our second day in the city includes a Broadway workshop with a music director and a Broadway actor, in which students will learn a song and dance from a Broadway show. They'll also have an opportunity to participate in a question-and-answer with the actor to get a perspective of a day in the life of living and working in New York, as well as living and working as a professional artist and performer, which our students might be interested in pursuing someday themselves. Later that evening, students will see a Broadway musical in which the actor they met earlier is in the cast, so that's a great opportunity for them to see someone they have just recently met in action. And finally, our last day in the city will be spent at the 9/11 Memorial and Museum. I feel strongly about including this visit in any travel to New York City with students. Additionally, this allows some cross-curricular opportunities with our history department. Our sightseeing highlights include the Rockefeller Center and the top of the Rock that students will visit, the 70th floor, to get a view of the city, Times Square, which will be an interesting opportunity for our students to see city life, the Oculus at the World Trade Center, a Radio City Music Hall backstage tour, and a dinner cruise with architecture viewing of the Statue of Liberty, Brooklyn Bridge, and the World Trade Center. I approximate that the trip per student will cost $1300 to $1500, depending on the number of travelers that attend the trip. The choirs will fundraise throughout this calendar year to ensure that all students that are interested in this opportunity have the chance to attend, and payment is all online through the tour company. I plan for a chaperone ratio of one to two chaperones per 10 students to ensure that students are always under adult supervision when they are having free time in the city. Additionally, I prefer to have a district nurse travel with us, but if this is not possible, I will undergo medication administration training prior to traveling. At this time, are there any questions that I can answer about this proposal?
I just had one. I noticed that the contract with this agency had a date of 1/31, but it said it was only good for 30 days, so have you?
Yes, I've spoken with our tour consultant, and he knows that the proposal is up for approval tonight.
Okay.
So we are aware, yeah, thank you.
That was a good presentation.
Thank you.
You had all the information there.
All right, great, well, thank you so much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hey, now we have a preschool presentation by Dr. Amy Davis.
Good evening. I'm delighted to present a proposal for a preschool at Westwood Elementary School. As many of you know, this has long been a dream of ours to bring our earliest learners on campus with the rest of our K-2 students. The goal is... Our goal is to implement one center-based classroom at Westwood. That would be an AM class and a PM class. There are many advantages. I'd like to highlight the fact that the building activities would be inclusive of our early learners. Transition to kindergarten would be much easier with the ability to interact with teachers and with families. Our staff is already serving our students. Kate Hess, who, I don't think she's here, but Kate Hess is one of our teachers, and she has been at Metzenbaum this year, serving as the center-based teacher. We felt it was in the best interest of our students, and that class is the majority of our West G students. Thank you. This also gives us the opportunity to intervene early. We would have an opportunity to have half the class, students with identified special needs, and then also an opportunity for peer models to enroll as well. It would be five days a week. We could house up to 32 total students, 16 per class, and we predict that we would need one teacher and then one paraprofessional in order to most appropriately support. Related services would be able to be provided by the district, and there are two who are already housed there. Thank you. Just some general information. The curriculum that we would recommend, the state dictates much of the curriculum in terms of options that we would have. Currently, they are using the AEPS III. We would also like to use Fundations Integrity because that would align with programming that we already have in place according to the science of reading. Students who are identified as students with special needs would not pay tuition, while the peer models would pay tuition. In terms of training, a lot of training has already taken place since our teacher is already doing the job. However, there are some routine items. Public School Works is a district training. Some early literacy and curriculum work might need to be done, and crisis prevention intervention is just behavior management. Some anticipated costs... Did I do that? Anticipated costs would include purchasing the curriculum. We do, we, there's a step-up-to-quality process that has to be completed by location, so by moving from Metzenbaum over to Westwood, there would be, there would be quite a bit of work in that area, which would require some consultant fees. We would need some supplies and furniture, although we do already have some in place. And again, much of the staffing is already in place. We would need some building and playground updates to be in compliance. There's fencing that needs to be there. We need to make sure that safety comes first. And there's a family education component that comes with opening a preschool that we would want to encourage. In terms of a timeline, the timeline is a bit condensed. We would want to get started right away pending board approval to let parents know to register with us, and then we would want to open up the peer model program, and we would, we would treat it much like we do open enrollment, where we would post on the website, and there would be a portal where parents of peer models could apply, and it would be timestamped in order to do it in a fashion that gave everybody opportunity. We would want to bring in the step-up-to-quality process very soon and ensure that we have staffing, the room, and everything set. Do you have any questions?
I have several.
Oh, good.
Really?
Yeah.
So you said we need a teacher and a paraprofessional, but we're going to have six potential special needs, special education needs students in there along with our typical students? Do we need an intervention specialist in there, too?
The teacher would be an intervention specialist, apologies.
Okay. Stop me if you guys have questions, too, because I have a few down. The cost that it's going to take to get this up and running at Westwood, how much of that is going to be transferable to the middle school should we eventually could put that preschool space here? We have that 10,000-square-foot addition that we were looking at for this building. How much of that then can move into this, this space?
That should not be a problem, and fortunately, we wouldn't have to go through the whole licensing step again.
But the playground equipment, the supplies and all that, that can just come here, so it wouldn't be...
With the exception of one very generous donation that we would want to keep there.
Okay. And then my last question is, are the threes and fours, the three-year-olds and four-year-olds, are they going to be split by AMPM, or are we doing threes and fours together?
We would do threes and fours together.
Okay. That's it for me.
So today, we have this at Metzenbaum?
Mm-hmm, we do.
And do we pay for that?
We, our teacher is reimbursed.
Okay.
We still pay. We still have a tuition fee, $26,000 a student.
Twenty-six hundred?
Six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand.
That's correct.
So this would save money.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at here.
This would be a cost savings for us. What we would do is not have all the overhead that they have at the ESC, because we're purchasing that service from the ESC, and so this would streamline that.
And, you know, in terms of the public sentiment on this, I think you said earlier that that's a positive, that people want this, that they want to move out, okay?
Yes.
I would have liked to have my kids in a preschool that was connected to the school they were going to. I think that would have been nice.
Is, can this be expanded? Because I see that, while, to start off, starting with 32 students sounds great, but I imagine there's going to be more demand than we can provide.
Correct.
How many go to Metzenbaum now?
I would say...
About, about.
Twenty-ish.
Okay.
Perhaps. There's a, there are some all-day students, and there are half-day students, and we're proposing to bring over the half-day students first, followed by the full-day students.
Okay.
I didn't see on there, Amy, is it, it's a first-come, first-served? I mean...
Not for the students with special needs.
Yeah.
But for the peer models.
Yeah.
That's the proposed...
But right now, we could accommodate the numbers.
We could.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next, we have an update on transportation. One of the questions that came from the board, I believe, Mrs. Sherwood, you had asked how we were spending the safety money that's being allocated to school districts to provide safety enhancements to our transportation department, so now we can, we are going to give you an overview of that tonight.
Thank you so much for inviting me to talk about the school bus safety fund from House Bill Three. Just to give a short, brief introduction, maybe, the, this was originally derived from Governor Mike DeWine's establishing of the Ohio School Bus Safety Working Group, which the report was released last January and made 17 recommendations with some safety features that we could add to buses. Introduced this year, they're proposing $25 million that would fund the '26, '27 purchases. The grants would support things as external bus cameras, which we have on our buses currently, crossing arms, lane departure warning systems, which works very much like your cars, the electronically stability control, which all our buses that we currently purchase, that comes standard, so we wouldn't be seeking that. Lighted crossover mirrors, a Colorado rack frame, which would help in rollovers or any kind of impacts that would incur from the top frame, fully illuminated stoparms, as well as the school bus sign on the front and back, collision-advanced warning systems, again, much like your cars, some more lighting, ground wash lights, Chevron reflective tape that goes on the very back of the bus, lap shoulder belts, in as well as any other safety items that we can appeal to the state to hopefully include in that grant. Funding from this will come from appropriations by the General Assembly, as well as there's currently a bill that is going through legislation about increasing those fines for passing school buses. So we hope that that'll go through and help fund some of the safety aspects of it. Implementing an administration, it would be managed by the DUE, Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, for those that don't know what that is. Current status, it is under legislative review, so we feel like it will be supported, so hang tight. In collaboration with our bus drivers, I did send out an email asking them, here's everything that we could possibly get, based upon our area and safety concerns, what do you think? So one of the things that came back was the ground wash lights. It is so dark when we pick up our children, there are no streetlights, so as you can see, a ground wash light lights up the street so that the children can be seen crossing, especially in front of the bus, and other motors can see them as well. The other thing that came about was the lighted crossover mirrors, which puts lights directly in front of the bus, where they can see the danger zone in front of the bus. The other one that the drivers had said would be the illuminated stop sign, as well as the school bus, so that when people are coming up to us, they won't know we're not a garbage truck or a plow truck or anything else that they need to watch for students. And then, of course, we were looking at school bus routing tablets that would basically do the same thing that your GPS on your phones do and tell you where to go, turn by turns, and we would ask the state for permission to use money on that if that's what we were to choose. Any questions?
Well, I have one. It's kind of the one I've had a couple times. We just talked about how dark it is and everything. Are we still doing group stops?
Not in the mornings, not at all.
Okay.
Everybody's picked up at their, at their, into their driveways.
That worries me, but we don't have sidewalks. We have, our kids are walking on roads, and so I'm very concerned about that.
My question is, because we have all received the same email a couple of times about seat belts on the bus, and just was it last week or the week before, Cleveland Heights had that bus that had, it totaled out the bus, it was very scary, fire. How do our bus drivers feel about school, or seat belts on a school bus?
They have very many different opinions on that, as the industry does by far. There's varying opinions, especially when we're dealing with fires, and what, what the seat belts can actually do in accidents, so it just varies.
It seems like we need the technology where we can have quick release on the seat belts by the bus driver. You know what I mean? Like, that technology should, yeah, we should invent that, because I think that's a good idea.
They're magnetized or something.
Yeah, yeah, something that quickly releases.
There isn't any such thing like that, right?
There is not, no.
Right, okay. Just making sure. I'm gonna, yeah.
Melody's correct. There were opposing opinions, as it regards to seat belts on school buses, and one can understand how, in a rollover, would seat belts be beneficial, but perhaps would they be beneficial in a submersion or in a fire? No. So I think that's, there is no clear-cut answer on that. There are people who feel very, very strongly on both sides. The other question, I suppose, is, does the bus move if seat belts aren't connected? Or does someone have to be on the bus to fasten every student's seat belt? And what about a child who's not able to manipulate the belt, particularly in a crisis situation?
Yeah.
So I mean, there are a lot, there are a lot of questions.
Right.
It sounds like it'd be easy to make a snap judgment, but it's not that easy.
Yeah, because that fire in Cleveland Heights, that was a fast fire.
Two minutes.
Yeah, it was, like, my first thought was if there were seat belts and if that bus was full, and you'd get all of those...
And they were young, these were older kids. If they were young children, the seat belts, that's the concern.
They were middle school children, that's what, the fire, the brakes were heated up, and the fire started in the very back, where, as you can see. And from the time the driver saw it to the time they got the students off, it was two minutes, and it was engulfed inside.
Yeah, it was scary.
Do we have any idea how much money we'll get? Is there some kind of formula?
No, they haven't decided how the money will be allocated and to, like, how are we going to request the money for what we want, so we're, that's, we're kind of still holding tight on that kind of information.
So when you get the money, or you know, then you'll come back to us with, here's what we really want to do?
Absolutely, yes, because you'll need to make the decision when we put the specs out to you, like you normally do.
Good job on making some improvements this year in transportation.
Thank you, we appreciate that. It was a group effort. We all worked very hard to get those times down, and we're still working on it.
I know you are. You've still got work to do, but it's good progress, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melody.
Thanks.
Next, the one who needs an intervention.
I've been threatened already. So tonight, I just want to bring you up to speed. As we get ready for our budget cycle, we're well in the midst of it. The state is also in their cycle of determining what the biennial budget is going to be. So I wanted to go through a couple of things that will, we're watching, and things that may or may not affect the school district's financial situation. So if we can, go ahead. Is this working? Some of the key things that are coming out of House Bill 96, that's the budget bill, they are, they are, this is the governor's portion of it, so this is in the House, this is in the Senate, this is the governor and what he presented. So they are considering the last phase in, the last two years of the phase in of the Fair School Funding Plan, in '26 and '27, and will be fully implemented. However, we're still using the fiscal year 2022 inputs, which means they're using salary information, they're using cost information from 2022. So that is creating a little, that's creating, not a little, it's creating a lot of our fellow districts going on to the guarantee because it's not working correctly. So it's kind of pushing things off to the guarantee, which is what we were trying to avoid with the Fair School Funding Plan. In our case, the guarantee base will be reduced about 90 to 95% in 2026, and 90% in 2027. Now, we have some additional funding that we'll get for transportation, special ed preschool, that will offset those 5% and the 10%, well, not the 10% amount, but for the 5% amount. So we're seeing some, just basically, we're going to consider it's going to be flat. So what we're getting from the state will continue through '26 and '27. Key insights into this budget, there are 343 districts that will actually lose funding in '26. Many of those districts are actually gaining in enrollment. So as you know, under the Fair School Funding Plan, you are funded based on the students that go to your district. So where you educate the district is where the dollars go. It's not working, and most of that's because of the fiscal year 2022 inputs versus updating those to 2024. Another thing is 56 of the districts are at the 10% minimum state share, and what that means in '25, and that will grow to 131 in '27, again, part of this, really, the fiscal year '22 input. We are at the 10% minimum state share. That's the lowest you can be. It was moved up last year, the year before, from 5% to 10%. We were able to get that increased overall at the state level, but now it's at 10%, and we're at that level, meaning that we are a fairly wealthy district, that our tax base assumes that we can pay more, so we are going to get less from the state. Spending on the guaranteed doubles between '25 and '27, but the guaranteed growth in districts barely rises, so we don't see that corresponding to actual dollars going to the individual districts. In the main operating budget, kind of things that are, this is, again, the governor's budget, this isn't the House budget that's coming out in April, in April 1st. Traditional districts, if you look at that, we're seeing a reduction of $31.6 million, but if you look down below at the traditional district add-ons, we're seeing a $45.3 million increase. So we're netting a positive increase overall to the districts, and we're seeing about $150,000, $150,000 increase in our funding, so we're pretty much flat. We get about $5 million from the state. In 2026, we're seeing a decrease, so that $40.2 million decrease, we're only going to get an additional $13.6, so we're seeing an actual decrease in funding for traditional districts. Where we, where the governor is seeing increases in his budget is they're moving more money to the voucher program. This is our Ed Choice and our Ed Choice expansion. $88.6 million in '26, and another $88.2 million in '27. Community and STEM schools still see an increase, another $70 million about for each year, and our joint vocational are also seeing additional increases. As we move to that career readiness, we're seeing that move, which is, you know, we are with Excel Tech, they're seeing an increase there. How the budget was spent in 2019, if you look at traditional schools, they received about 82.6% of the state funding, and what's going, what we see in '26 and '27 is that being reduced down to 72%. Where's that money shifting? We're seeing the shift in the scholarship program, 3.4% in 2019, moving to a 10.8% in scholarships in 2026, '27. Joint vocationals will go up a little bit, and community schools will stay, will increase slightly as well. But we're seeing that shift to, and this is what we've been talking about for several years, is seeing that shift go into the voucher program. When we look at West Yaga in itself, so when we look at the blue and the orange, these are our vouchers. These are through Ed Choice and Ed Choice expansion. So if we look at '22 and '23, you see we had 14 students on the voucher program, and then we moved up to about 150, I don't have my glasses on, so we moved to additional, you know, 20, 30 students in 2023. 2024 is when the expansion came in. You see that is a large increase for us, but when you look at the blue, these are the students that are getting, that are on what we consider low income. And a family of four, they moved that level to 450% of poverty, which is about $140,000 household income. So the orange are those that are exceeding that, that are not considered low income. So we're seeing a growth of about 294 students that are receiving vouchers in 2024. In 2025, we see that increase to 365. So we're seeing a growth there. That line that's going down is our enrollment, so 2111 is what we started with in 2022, and then we're going down to 1966. So each year, what we've seen, kind of in the first three years, is about a 30-student drop. You know, graduation classes are bigger, little, you know, the kindergarten classes are smaller, so we're seeing about a 30-student drop. This year was an 87-student drop, and you can see from the increase in the vouchers that may have, there was a 71-student increase in our vouchers. There may be some correlation there as well. We did, our class size didn't change that much. We do have a smaller class coming in in kindergarten this year, but we're seeing some of that change. So we are definitely in a prime area for vouchers. If you look at the number of private schools that are available to us in this area, we're seeing some of that shifting happen. Some major bills that are still under consideration, obviously, House Bill 96 is one that we will monitor. Like I said, in April, we'll see the House budget. Any comments or any testimony will be, need to happen before the middle of March, and if you're talking to our legislators, that would be the time to do that as well. And then Senate Bill 66 is the other one that we're focused on, and how we are going to, really, how the emergency and substitute levies will be treated as part of our 20-mil floor. Oh, 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 what happened? So when we look at the levy types and the changing tax rates, we talk about inside millage, there's a lot of vocabulary that needs to make sure we understand. So our inside millage, this is not voted millage, so every, the county, the village, you know, the townships, and the schools share 10 mills, and they're split up. So those are not voted on, that's just standard funding, so you don't have any type of vote that needs to happen for a levy. We see revenue growth in that area, that's how we, you know, see a slight increase when the valuation increases as well. The fixed-rate levies, those are what we call our continuing levies. We have some of those as well, they've been in place for a number of years, over 20 years. Those are all voter-approved, and they're approved at a fixed rate, meaning that they will fluctuate as the valuations increase in our property values. They have limited growth, their effective rate is by class, meaning a Class 1 or Class They have limited growth. Their effective rate is by class, meaning a class one or a class two or a pup. And they can decrease, but they cannot increase over the voted amount. That is included in the twenty mil floor. When we look at the fixed sum levies, sometimes they call them emergency levies, substitute levies, but they are a fixed sum, meaning that we're going to collect the same amount. We have two of those, a two thousand and three and a two thousand and five was the original time that we passed those. They were for five years and at a set amount, three point seven million and two point three five million. Those are set. We don't see growth in those. So what they collected in two thousand and three is what they collect today. What they collected in two thousand and five is what I collect today. So over twenty years, we haven't seen those increase, and they don't increase with the valuation. What happens is the valuation goes up, the millage goes down. However, they're not included in the twenty mil floor. That's what Senate Bill 66 is looking to do, to put that into the twenty mil floor. Because the twenty mil floor, and when we talk about the twenty mil floor, is because this is the minimum constitutional approved amount that the General Assembly determined that school funding should have from every district, from all their residents. And that is baked into that Fair School Funding Plan. So when we look at the twenty mil floor, when we say we're on the, we're ten percent, all of that's baked into how we're funded from the state as well. They count on that twenty mils for us as well. So those are kind of the different levies that we have. We have all kinds. We have all these levies, just like a number of schools. There are over three hundred and thirty school districts that have emergency levies. So we're not one, we're not unique in that amount at all. And we'll, this will continue to be something that we're going to follow and look at. What we're also seeing as part of Senate Bill, the Senate Bill 66, is we're looking at certain millage, the ten mills, that inside millage, no matter whether it's in a PI levy or in a general fund levy, would be included in the twenty mil floor, whereas now it could be excluded. And the reason those things are excluded, like the emergency levies were excluded, is because there were a number of districts back in nineteen seventy-six, they were having trouble passing levies. So that's why they put these emergency levies in place, because they're short a short period of time or they're for a fixed period of time, whereas continuing levies were having difficulty in approving those. Seventy-five was when House Bill ninety-nine twenty came in. That's when we had trouble, you know, that's when this all came in because of high inflation like we're seeing now. So this unique time is coming again, and we're seeing some concerns, certainly concerns with our property taxes after our 2023 valuation increases.
Can you explain the difference between a substitute levy and an emergency levy?
So the emergency levy is the first one that goes in. So you'll have that emergency levy. And then a substitute levy will come in later where you can substitute it and now make it more where you don't vote on it again. So if every time there's an emergency levy, it has for a fixed period of time, so five years or ten years, up to ten years. The substitute levy will take that emergency levy and convert it into a continuing levy that acts, has still a fixed amount, but you don't have to vote on it again. You will see increases from the substitute levy of a slight increase for new construction. Whereas now we don't see that in an emergency levy. It's straight, it collects three point seven million or collects two point three five.
And a substitute levy is still not included in the twenty mil floor?
Currently.
Even when it's converted to a continuing levy?
Correct. And what we have on the advantage of the emergency levies that we have in place now, in a decade ago, they determined that you wouldn't get the homestead and rollback provisions. So the homestead and rollback provisions, you know, we get a, as residents, we get a twelve point five percent reduction up to that from our property taxes by having that. All of our levies qualify. They're all qualified levies. When we move to a new levy, anything's passed after this certain amount of time, we don't, we don't get that exception. You'll pay a hundred percent of the levy. You don't, the state doesn't reimburse us for that homestead and rollback. So those emergency levies are all kind of grandfathered. And a substitute levy, if we were to make that move, it would also be grandfathered as well. If we have a new levy, let's say that we don't do that and we put on a new levy, then we lose that twelve and a half percent. So it will automatically increase taxes by twelve and a half percent because we, the state won't reimburse us for that homestead and rollback. So it's kind of good to have those in place. It's been something, if we look at the levy history of the district, we saw a number of years where we tried to pass continuing levies and were unsuccessful, but they were able to pass these emergency levies. And so they've continued to have those fixed sum levies. It's unfortunate to have the name, but that's what the legal name of these fixed sum levies are. And it's been advantageous to us to keep those because of the twelve and a half percent rollback in homestead. This just goes about showing, you know, the property values. If property values increase, tax rates typically go down. Voted fixed rate, tax rates decrease until the district reaches the twenty mil floor. Once you meet that twenty mil floor, and that's what happened to us in 2023, is we dipped down to sixteen mills. So we had to increase or artificially increase the tax rates to twenty mills to meet the constitutional requirements of school funding. And that's, there are, there are a number of districts that had to do this as well. Rates continue to decrease on fixed sum taxes. So if we, originally, let's take our three point seven million levy that was at five point seven mills. It's now at two point nine five. So you'll, as property values go up, that millage goes down. We're still collecting the same amount of money, just the millage goes down. And that's through the reduction factor. And the reduction factor, I can show you a spreadsheet that shows all that, but I do believe y'all might glaze over. I'm welcome to go with, with any of you. I did prepare one that would explain that. But in essence, we're looking at House Bill 66. We don't know what's going to happen with it. It is a concern on how our funding would be affected. Now, we've already hit the twenty mil floor, so anything that we add back in will have a, it won't, it won't impact that twenty mil floor. Once you hit it, you've hit it. This year, we're at twenty point oh three with our levies, not counting the emergency levies, but twenty point oh three. So as we come and have our property tax increase, the next one will not be until 2027. When we look at valuations again, we do a mid-valuation. By moving that PI levy that we moved from the outside back into inside millage into the general fund, that will probably keep us off the twenty mil floor. That'll keep us above the twenty mil floor, not causing that increase in taxes of what we saw in 2023. So that's the game. Questions? This just goes through the twenty mil floor, what's included, what's not. We talked about the emergency and substitute levies and then what a fixed dollar levy is as well. Questions from the board?
I think I'm finally understanding it.
It's very, it's
It's been three years.
It's very new. We're just starting the process. We're probably not going to know what the final budget is until the end of June. And then we, of course, have to prepare a five-year forecast update in May. That'll make it a little challenging. But we're going to keep the state funding flat for now. We'll know that. And then we'll have a pretty good idea of what's going on, probably late June. These are not running simultaneously. The House Bill 96 is running on this track and then Senate Bill 66 is running on this track. They've had, they're not combined yet. They may eventually merge and be together, but right now they're separate.
Were they just introduced?
Sixty-six was just introduced. They've had two hearings on that, two testimony periods on sixty-six. But, so it's, it's in there. It's all kind of going together. There are over thirty property tax reform bills going on right now. There's a lot of ideas about how to minimize the impact. We all saw the 2023. Every one of us in this room saw that impact, no matter where you live. So they're looking at ways to adjust that, not to see that happen again. So they're looking at reducing the twenty mil floor. They're looking at taking away the homestead and rollback provisions and not, residents would still see it, but the state wouldn't pay for it. So they're looking at a lot of different options on, they're looking at freezing taxes. I know, and my mother's from Texas, at sixty-five, your school taxes froze, you know, until you, unless you bought a new house. So I mean, that was, they're looking at a lot of different options that we'd have available to us. So we'll wait and see. But sixty-six seems to have the most interest. It will affect the most people. What we're seeing also is a number of districts will be, look, will be going on fiscal watch if this happens. So there are not enough people working in the state of Ohio for the Department of Education to monitor those. So there's a big concern down there in Columbus right now. All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
We're moving on to public remarks. We, just as a, as a reminder, I know that, that most people already know this, we do limit comments to three minutes. You'll hear the sound from Karen's phone eventually. Can you tell me when you're ready? Okay, Mr. Zafiro.
My name is Anthony Zafiro and I'll be brief. What's going on? Do you have any idea what you're doing up there? I know you think you do, but do you really? It's not so long ago that you said you had no choice but to follow the Master Planning Committee recommendation and put forth a bond to build a new hundred and thirty million dollar school. Yet here you are poised to delay it again. How much is it going to cost us this time? You've already cost us tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars in planning costs, not to mention tens of millions of dollars in prospective new building costs by sitting on your hands for over half a decade. Have you ever heard the term fiscal malfeasance? I know the Budget Commission has. How about the Indian Hill School District? You ever heard of them? I think it'd be a good idea for you to go and look it up. Your best decision now would be to get off that stage. Do us all a favor and resign, every single one of you. You clearly have no idea what it is that you're doing, and whatever it is that you are doing is not in the best interest of the community. I recommend that every citizen go out and watch the last two Budget Commission videos, as well as the one from February 28th, 2024, at auditor.geoga dot O H dot com under the menu Fiscal, then Budget Commission, if you want to learn more.
Mr. Bisac, did I say it right? I know, miss, oh, sorry.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I haven't been to many board meetings in a lot of years because I've always voted for trustees and commissioners that I believe would, I could trust to take care of our schools and our townships. And our schools have been, from an education point of view, have been taken care of very well. We have great graduation rates. We have great students. My bone of contention is issue seven. For five and a half years, you've been talking about building schools. Last December, right before Christmas, this board voted to put on a May 6th ballot, a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, as I like to say it, twelve point eight percent of a billion with a B. It's a lot of money. All of a sudden, you guys are deciding tonight to take it off the ballot. And my little brain said, why are they doing this? What has changed? I know Christina, you were at the library the other day. You did a great job and thank you, as did Katie, and explaining to it. And five days ago, everything was great. And then all of a sudden, ah, we're going to vote tonight to take it off. And my little brain kept asking why, why, why? And it occurred to me today. I talked to the Board of Elections and I said, if they take this off, which they were aware of, can they put it on in an August election? Two people confirmed at the Board of the Elections, yes. This board can declare a fiscal emergency. And you don't have to prove it to the Board of Elections. You can just say, we have a fiscal emergency and put that bond back on an August election when there's nobody around. Russell did it years ago. We voted down the fire department twice, put a special election on in August, passed. The state laws in Ohio say you can't have special elections in August, except for schools. So my question to you guys is, if you're going to vote it down tonight, will you commit not to vote in the future to put it on in an August election? Or is this going to be a fast one? We're going to say, yeah, it's not on now, and then we're going to put it on in August.
So I will say typically, we don't respond to like public comments like that right now. But there will be a discussion with, when that comes up later on the agenda. So if you're going to hang out here for a minute, you probably get some answers at that point. We have not discussed any of this yet, so.
But it is a possibility then to put it on in August.
I didn't know that. I had never heard of such a thing, so.
Ohio revision thirty-five.
I believe you. No, I a hundred percent believe you. I just didn't.
Because if you are going to put it on in August, I would suggest everybody vote that you leave it in May and we vote it all down.
I hear you.
We, we do not want an August election. That is so unfair. I've talked to so many people. They're stressed out. The seniors are all anxious. It's been going on for over five years. It's not fair to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bisac? Oh, okay. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
And if you can state your address, making sure that you're a resident, please.
Katie Davis, nine five five nine Winchester Valley. I see tonight that you are discussing potentially removing the hundred and twenty-eight million bond issue from the May ballot. I commend your decision to reflect on the choice. It is not easy to reconsider things. It would be nice to hear discussion on if this is indicative of the project being canceled or if the project is still planned, but with a potential delay. I would like to speak for a minute on why I believe delaying this bond issue for approximately one year would be a smart decision. First, as I have tried over these past few months to speak with some parents about the project, I've realized that our community is full of very intelligent people with great questions they feel should be answered before they decide to invest a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars or not. Many of these questions could be answered if the board would spend additional funds on the next phase of design development. I'm not suggesting to invest heavily in full construction documents, but funding a thirty percent complete set of design drawings would provide a relatively accurate site plan with parking layouts, athletic spaces, and high-level traffic flow accounted for. To date, it appears that we have only spent fifty-six thousand dollars on design with G P D Group. And maybe some of the main questions could be covered under their current scope, but I believe adding additional focused design scope to the G P D contract could provide comprehensive answers to the biggest questions and could be possible even if you move forward with a May 2025 ballot, but it would be better suited for a longer timeframe. Second, I and others want a thorough financial analysis and future plan with two pillars. One main concern is understanding our existing maintenance costs and how those costs could be improved by newer inefficient facility upgrades. The other main concern is how this bond issue would potentially fit into upcoming levy renewals and how maintenance costs of the upgraded facilities would be situated in that timeline. Again, this could probably be put together quickly for the May 2025 timeline, but a longer timeframe seems appropriate given the level of detail being requested. Third and last, a delay of approximately one year would allow this board to hire a third party to comprehensively survey our community. I believe strongly that a survey should be conducted to determine the future of Westwood and Lindsay Properties, among other design elements that the community could really guide. There is no time to do a survey if you stick with the May 2025 timeline. Thank you for your time and consideration. I believe in the plan, and I don't want to see the project canceled entirely. And I'm looking forward to seeing if it will stay on this ballot or potentially be put on a future one. And then also I have a quick question. If, if I was understanding Karen's presentation, does the twenty mil floor, essentially, if they raise you to the twenty mil floor, does that mean that you are at the lowest tax rate possible with the exception of emergency levies that were outside of that millage?
Yes.
Okay. So no matter if you go below it, they're going to raise you to it no matter what?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Okay, I'm not a public, oh, Brandon Davis, nine five five nine Winchester Valley. Not a public comment person. I'm not nearly as eloquent as this amazing woman that was up there before me. Happens to be my wife. I do want to thank, and it was, I wrote this down before I heard all this, but, you know, I served an elected official, my wife served an elected official, and I know these type of elected official roles are basically volunteer. So I want to say thank you all for, for serving and dealing with all that, so I appreciate it. Some of you know, but I've been in the engineering, design, build, construction business for 25 years. One of the, I started in the field and then I, now I own and lead companies, but one of the businesses I did, 16 school buildings across seven districts. There's a lot of people, I think, in our community that have technical skills that live in this world that could help the board and the administration. So whether you go forward as was planned, I don't know. I just, I saw that it might come off the ballot, but if it comes off the ballot or goes forward, I would recommend forming a, like a next steps committee and actively engaging these folks in the community. I told you my experience, I know a guy in the community who owns part of a company that specializes in foundations and deep foundation technologies all around the world. We have families who are part of one of the biggest site work companies in Ohio that live in the West G community. We have people that will work as executives for site development companies. We have all kinds of, all kinds of people in this community, and that's just in my little circle. So if we expand it, I think there's a lot of skill and knowledge that could be leveraged. Because I know the school, the school and the community has not done a major construction project in a long time. So I would recommend engaging those folks somehow, however that looks, to help with the next phase of design and help with, you know, this project as it moves forward, so that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Godin.
Good evening, Steve Godin, 7130 Fox Ledges Lane. Quickly, one, I did view the painful Budget Commission special meeting on 2/20, and I was, found it very revealing and disappointing, quite frankly. To learn that we have a 25-plus million dollar cash balance or over $12,000 per student is far in excess of our need. In fact, as a taxpayer and investor, I feel I've been misled, as should every other voter in this district. The shell game of emergency and continuing and PI levies must end. Stop twisting the definitions to fit your needs. District property owners expect and deserve honest, clear communications on our finances. Stop peeing on our heads and telling us it's raining. Don't think for a minute that renewal of the next emergency levy in 2026 is a fait accompli. Be advised now that there will be significant and substantial pushback, at least by a few of us in the community. Unless and until you can reasonably explain language that a fifth grader can understand how you intend to effectively use the $25 million balance of taxpayer money that you're sitting on, don't expect another levy to pass. Second point is, the so-called master plan is no plan. It's a concept. It's a great concept, I think. There are a lot of effective ideas in it, but it's not a plan. So please, don't put it forward to a vote until it is a plan, until you have detailed timelines, detailed expenses, comparisons, and other things that other speakers this evening have noted. Please do not put it forward because we will vote it down significantly and substantially. Last, I understand there are two significant administrative roles that are being voted on again today. Assistant Superintendent and Director of Curriculum and Instruction, which I think might be a new role. As I had indicated several months back when you hired the new superintendent, I suggested that a comprehensive search be done and that we find the best people. We may have the best people. That'd be great, but it would sure be nice to know. So let's do some comprehensive searches before we anoint friends or those who we have personal relationships with. And if we did these searches, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kilroy.
Mike Kilroy, 9465 Marshawk Run. Thanks for your time. On February 20th, this may just tie into a lot of stuff. On February 20th, the West Georgia School Board was humiliated, criticized, accused of hoarding and misleading the taxpayer, among many other accusations by the Georgia County Budget Commission. It's all on video for people to witness. This is not my opinion. This is not my comment. It's all on video. The board was accused of misleading the voters on the use of the term "emergency levy." Scare tactic. And they knew it. Where was the emergency in 2016 with $11 million in the bank? Where was the emergency in '29 with $15 million in the bank? And now there's 25 million in the bank in just one account. The board was accused of violating purpose language. The board said they had no option but, and there's been, is it PI this or continuing that or Florida this or 20 mil or 15 mil MICKEYMOUSE. I was on the board. I can't follow all that stuff. The board was, they said they had no option but to have emergency levies or else the 12.5% homestead rollback would be lost with the new levy. It's not a new levy. For years, we've had the idea of a substitute levy, and you can do that. You guys are not doing your research. You new members are relying on the mentoring or experience of old board members who didn't do their research either. We had, we didn't do the research on a business manager who was later arrested by the FBI. It was our job. It's, I know it's a low-paying job. You got to do your work. You really do. Mr. Beers, you were part of the problem back then. You're part of the problem now. You should gracefully resign. You've done enough damage. The board was told emergency levies cannot be used for salaries, and they did amongst many other things. This is just a fact, not my opinion, the, who is it? Oh, sorry, Attorney General. Your lawyer may tell you something. He or she, whomever, is entitled to their opinion. They're entitled to be wrong. I'll go with the Attorney General. They did slide after slide after slide. You owe it to yourselves. Well, sorry. Then the board tried to sneak 1.2 million into the permanent improvement fund, causing the general fund to need more taxes. The commission flatly rejected it. They penalized the district 1.2 million. They penalized the district 2.35 million last year. One commissioner said you owe 6 million back because you're so far over the average for our area. And their job is to protect the taxpayers. See the video on 2/20, 2025 Budget Commission. Be shocked and embarrassed and demand. Demand that the board do their job or resign immediately. You guys are not getting good advice. You're not getting good mentorship. You're not getting good information. And you're hurting the district. We care about the school. I've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this district, whether it's computers or fields. I'm putting my money where my mouth is. You're not doing your job. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to routine items.
Resolution 80 to approve routine matters of the West Georgia Local Board of Education.
So moved. Second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 81 to approve warrants for the February 2025s.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 82 to accept donations from the West Georgia Educational Foundation.
So moved. Second, any discussion?
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 83 to accept increases, decreases in the fiscal year 2025 appropriations.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 84 to approve student activity statement for purpose and budget for the 2025 school year.
So moved. Second, any discussion?
Yeah, just remind me what that is, Karen.
Which one?
This, this resolution.
Statement of purpose?
Yeah, what is, does this be?
It just states the budget for the student activity fund, so they just have to fill out a form that says, this is the revenues we're bringing in and this is what the budget is we're going to spend. So I just set the appropriation at the budget level.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 85 to accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 86 is to approve administrative appointments for the 2025-2026 school year. I'd ask that the motion be put on the tape, put forward by the board, and then I'd ask Dr. Ben Casada to please introduce the individuals.
So moved.
Second, okay, discussion.
Just, could you clarify that that is not a new position?
Yes, that's not a new position. It's actually the position I was hired to serve in when I was named Assistant Superintendent. I kept curriculum and instruction underneath my purview, so the role exists. It's just been filled by me for the entirety of my time here.
Remind everybody how long you've been here, please.
I've been here 12 years.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I am pleased to introduce to you two very, very talented staff members that have been here at West Georgia Schools for a long time. They have been a part of much of our academic achievement over the past years. They haven't been here quite as long as I have, but they have been here for much of our achievement and been central to that work. Dr. Amy Davis has two master's degrees, a PhD that she defended in the summer. She's one of those very rare individuals, the only individual I've ever met in the course of my career over several districts that have served in literally every capacity in a school district. She has been a paraprofessional. She has been an intervention specialist. She has been a general ed teacher. She has taught at the elementary level. She has taught at middle school level. She has been a bowling principal. She has been a curriculum director of a school district. She has served here as the Director of Pupil Personnel. I have never in my life known anyone who's served in every one of those seats and done so with such great success. She has served in Rocky River Local Schools. She has served at Shaker Heights City Schools. Amy comes to us really instrumental in maintaining high levels of academic achievement throughout the pandemic, where she helped us go to, in an instant, online learning and in an instant, in-person learning when we came right back. So she really has seen this district through some very challenging times. I think what is most impressive about Dr. Davis is really her dogged determination for high achievement for all kids. She challenges our staff to think about what that means for individual students. She is never okay with complacency. She, she holds everyone to great account, and she's very student-focused. I can tell you, we're lucky to have her. She is highly marketable and we're pleased that she is here with us at West Georgia Local Schools. Megan Bellin is a school psychologist by trade, although you would hardly know it, but she has spent a decade serving in the Solon City Schools as a school psychologist. She's done graduate work at Kent State or undergraduate at Miami. She left Solon to become a supervisor at PEP. For those of you that don't know what PEP is, PEP is a positive educational program that serves local districts. She served in an autism unit as a supervisor. Also, a lot of experience in general, pardon me, special education. When she came to West Georgia Local Schools, she came here as a school psychologist, and she had obtained her principal licensure. When an opening came up at Lindsay Elementary, we thought her leadership in terms of our special education department was so exemplary that we thought she would make an excellent principal. She went to Lindsay Elementary where their academic achievement soared to heights that has never been seen. At Lindsay Elementary, they were named, nominated, and named a Blue Ribbon School under her leadership. She also served as the middle school principal with the idea that she could extend that achievement as grades went up through the middle school, which she has done. They have the highest academic achievement in that building since she's been there in the past two years. These are two very remarkable educators. They are exemplary in their field. I am very pleased that they would choose to serve our students. I certainly would be pleased to call them friends because they're quality individuals, but more importantly, they are tremendous educators. So I'm proud of their work and certainly they are deserving of these expositions for our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could just add a comment. I've been a superintendent for a long time, as many of you know. This is my 26th year as a superintendent, and it's the culmination of about 40 years in education. And there are a dozen superintendents and assistant superintendents in the state of Ohio who have been under my supervision at one point or another in that career. And I can honestly say of the people I've looked at, these are two of the very, very strongest that I've ever worked with. Their work is impeccable. Their work ethic is beyond description. And I know they will do their best to make West Georgia the best school district that it can be, so.
Anyone else?
Are we open for comments? Oh, okay, I do have a couple. First, I do think that it's really important for a leader to have a staff that they trust and feel confident in. So having been in positions where I had to put my staff together, it was very important that I had the right people on the team. At the end of the day, you will be accountable. So I think it behooves you to have the team that you think is capable and ready to take on these responsibilities. Now, the other thing I have to say is, so is somebody going to replace Dr. Davis's position now?
So we are, Dr. Davis will hold on to, rather than the unrelieving Assistant Superintendent with curriculum and instruction, with the Assistant Superintendent shall hold on to the components of pupil personnel, and Megan will take on curriculum and instruction.
Okay. Okay, so it truly is no additional payroll other than whatever we decide here tonight. Okay, all right. That's all the questions I have.
Yeah, I would echo what Pam said. I, I know that this district has spent years accumulating quality people and retaining those, and that's not easy. I've worked in several school districts and there's been a lot of turnover, especially in central offices, and it's hard to find people that we can trust that have the best interest of our kids. And I, I couldn't be more secure in letting you choose your team from people that you've already worked with for a long time. And we have track records already proven that we are most appreciative for because we, our community members here too, and our school's success is important to all of us outside of our role as board members. So I'm happy to see the recommendations.
I think also, just adding, I think it's important to groom people for growth. And in doing so, it's important for an organization like this, because I know it's like, I come from business and that you, you know, I'm told this is education, it's not business, but it is a business, right? It is. And, and I think it's important to show movement within the organization. It has to be good people, because at the end of the day, you'll be measured, right? So we have to perform, so, thanks.
Anyone else?
Is it one year?
Three years.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Megan has her family here tonight. Would you like to introduce them?
Sure, sure. This is the husband Mark, and then my son Everett, and the daughter Scarlett. I told them they could leave after I had started.
Don't you want to stay?
Run now.
Moving on.
Resolution 87 is to approve certified stipend. This is for work outside of the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-eight is to approve the 2025 extended school year summer programming stipends.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-nine is to approve certified long-term substitute assignment for the individual name. This is in our science department.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution ninety is to approve classified staff appointments for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-one is to approve a change in classified staff contract status for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
I am sorry.
It's okay.
Excuse me, Mrs. Claypool. Resolution ninety-two is to accept classified staff retirements.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? I would like to say something. I worked with both of these people. I worked with Nancy Christie for the four years that I, that I worked here, and Steve.
Nancy, yeah.
And they're both just really awesome people, and I, I, Nancy and I worked closer together, obviously, because I had kids that needed supports and whatnot, and she was there. And so I just wanna say thank you to both Nancy and Steve, and Godspeed on your retirement. Well deserved.
When Steve submitted his letter, I told him that it was, I, I was pretending I was reading it and saying it was because I was leaving, and he let me know that he didn't recall writing that.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-three is to approve non-exempt staff appointment for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm just questioning, is this a new position or a replacement?
It's, um...
Is it new dollars? Is it new dollars?
It's a new dollars. It, we have a contract out that's outplaced, so this is bringing in her into...
That was my next question, is what are we saving?
We're looking at changing that, um, we have a net ops contract, so this is all part of that restructuring of the net op contract.
Okay, that's what I figured, okay.
And Erica has worked here before, so she's familiar with her.
So you're, you're moving outside cost to inside?
Inside cost.
And so we're not, this in the long run will probably be a savings?
It will be a savings.
Or at least neutral.
It'll be neutral, and what we're looking at is, because we have the E rate, if we choose a different provider, we'll be able to save additional funding that will help fund this position as well.
Good, thanks.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-four is to approve unpaid days for the individuals listed.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-five is to approve service contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
And resolution ninety-six is to authorize the award of service contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as listed.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-seven is to approve a chaperone for the middle school's sixth-grade trip to Camp Fitch.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-eight is to approve the second and final reading of the new policies, revised policies, and replacement policies listed in the agenda.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
I would just say that, um, thank you to the board members who did get back questions, et cetera. I made the adjustments in the policies and/or gave the rationale for why there was not a change. Okay?
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-nine is to approve the first and final reading of Board Policy fifty-two, twenty-three, and the reason for doing that is because the effective date of this policy is April ninth. This is release time for religious instruction, three days release time.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
This basically was prescribed and written for us, correct?
Yes, pretty much. We had a policy that was similar to this in the past. This one elaborates quite a bit more on it. We will now have to speak with any, um, outside agencies and organizations that wish to, to have, to host such programs. The biggest obstacle to it really is, is not a philosophical one, it's, it's a time constraint. It's difficult to find the time because students are not to be released from core content areas, but they're to be released for periods that would coincide with recess, for instance, or an elective, and it's difficult to find the amount of time. But we will be, we've only had one outside agency, and it was a church, contact us to begin discussions on this, and I asked them if they wait until the board had made, uh, had finalized its policy in March. So it's, it's a mandated policy. We can speak to the agencies to determine how best to accomplish this.
My point is, we're just, we're passing this to fall in line with what we are mandated to do.
Correct, that's true.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution one hundred is to adopt special education model policies and procedures with modifications. Once the board gets this in motion, I can explain what that means. I hope.
Second.
All right. The Ohio Department of Education workforce developed model policies for special education along with procedures for those that correspond to those policies. The board approved that in February. Subsequent to that, there were some concerns voiced by the Office of Civil Rights that some of the Ohio Department of Education and workforce policies might violate civil rights law. So that is in the process of being worked out right now. The timeline has been extended considerably. Before, we were told this had to be in place by March thirtieth, which was why we had acted in February. Now the timeline has been extended beyond that, but under the advice of our legal counsel, they suggested that we put in the modifications of those policies right now as a stopgap measure. There may be another revision to this come, come spring. Explain that okay, Mary Michelle? Because I know you have more knowledge on this than the rest of us.
Well, what was their general concern? What was the, I mean?
The, the, this is spelled out in detail in, in this resolution, because there are so many issues that, they were concerned that the Ohio Department of Education basically acted in haste, and there are some people who were concerned in the Office of Civil Rights that some of the mandates from the Ohio Department of Education might violate existing civil rights law. So while that's being ironed out, and the attorneys from both sides are discussing it, what they said is that we're putting in safeguards now that would, that would, that would perhaps satisfy both sides for the time being until we can get a final resolution.
Okay, so you'll come back to us one way or another?
I may not be here then.
Well, that's true.
But someone will come back.
Somebody will come back to us.
I hope it's resolved by then, so hopefully I'll be the one who brings that back to you, yes.
Good, thanks.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
I'm gonna abstain again.
And now I know why.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution one oh one is authorizing the execution and delivery of a master electric energy sales renewal agreement between West Jaga Local Schools and power for schools' endorsed electric supplier. And this is through the, um, a contract that we have through the Ohio Schools Council. The good news is this year, according to Karen, it's a six percent reduction for us.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution one oh two is to approve the Ohio Schools Council Cooperative Advertising and Receiving Bids. This is for two new school buses, chassis, and bodies.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just...
So this is to add the two routes that we wanna add, and while I'm thinking of it, is, are we still on plan to not have outside bus drivers next year? Okay. That's a yes?
Yes, and it's my understanding that these buses will ensure that our fleet is, is
go-ready the first day of school next year for those routes that we need to keep our times low, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to know, because I know we talked about it, that we, we have a rotation on buses. We rotate buses routinely, just, so we have that schedule. These two buses are in addition to that.
Yes.
So when you see us coming for the normal rotation of new buses?
We ordered those this fall. The normal rotation was this fall, so this is the addition of those. It takes about a year to get the buses still, so we're, uh, moving ahead.
Keeping our fingers crossed.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution one oh three is to approve the West Jaga High School Choir noteworthy tours proposal to New York, New York. This is from a year from now. It's for March nineteenth to twenty-second in twenty-twenty-six, and you heard the presentation tonight.
Second.
Any discussion?
Have fun.
Yeah, no kidding.
I, I was a chaperone when the band went there. I forget how many, it was before Jason was here, a long time ago. And the, uh, behind-the-scenes tour of Radio City Hall was amazing.
Just make sure when they go there that they know that Cleveland is second to New York in the number of theaters. So they should be glad that they, once they're there, that they can see productions here and enjoy them too.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
I believe the next two resolutions are the board's.
Yeah. So, um, I have something to say, but it will, I'll introduce the resolution first. Resolution one oh four is a resolution declaring it necessary to remove a bond issue from the May twenty-twenty-five ballot. Do we feel it necessary for me to read all of this?
No.
No.
Okay.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. There are a lot of things being circulated around a host of different places, some reputable, some not. What I will say is, we listen. I listen. I've spent the last few weeks, hours on the phone, answering emails, going to places where I could answer questions for people, and they had excellent questions that, that, that needed answering for them to feel comfortable. But the one message that, that kept coming back was that we might not disagree that we need new buildings or a different plan for our kids, but it is probably not the right time right now. And we listen to it a lot. I think all of us have listened to a lot of those same messages. So after I left the library, um, last Sunday, I literally just sat at home for a while and really contemplated what, what this was. What I want for the kids is obviously something that I feel passionately about, but this is not about what I want. This is about what the community is ready to support. is not about what I want. This is about what the community is ready to support. And I believe that our community is supportive of our kids and our schools, but I think, given the strains and the confines of everything that's happened in the last year, that, that it warrants a discussion. And so when I asked Karen to put this resolution on today's agenda, I understood that it meant that, starting at four o'clock on Friday, that, that things would start kind of brewing and people would start making assumptions. I do not think that it is okay to just keep it going without having one final conversation. The reason it says it's coming off is because we've already voted to put it on. So the verbiage is what it is because it's already on there, and if we decide to take it off, then that's going to be what it would have to be. So I welcome your discussions, your comments, your, what you've heard, what you've been kind of thinking about, because this is something that I think that we all need to chime in on, and I do think it's super important we do it publicly. So have at it.
Well, I can speak to all the conversations that I've had. So I'm in the schools all the time, every day, with all of the parents, because my kids are there. And everyone does support our students, and they do want what's best for our students. Every parent there, to a person, I can say, is very supportive of our schools and wants them to grow and sees the necessity and sees where learning is going. But there are also lots of questions. There were also lots of ideas and things that, you know, weren't necessarily clear to the community, and I think that those are very important. And I think this, the community will be behind the schools and the growth of our schools and every, anything we put forward in the future, but I think that they have to have all of the answers and they have to have a very clear picture. So I think that this is, is what I think is necessary. And in my conversations with the community members and with Christina and with other people, it just seems like, you know, maybe we need to put the brakes and, and, and answer those clarifying questions that need to be answered to move forward.
Yeah, to your point too, you know, I, I can be, people that know me well know that I am naively optimistic. I really felt like this would be the right time in spite of everything. And then I started listening to more and more people, and our seniors in particular are feeling a little bit squeezed, a lot of it squeezed. And so that's a large portion of our voting base, and to disregard what they have to say, whether it's a real or just a perceived threat to their finances, is still real to them, and that's something that we need to consider. I also thought we did a good job communicating community meetings. They were well-attended the times that we did them, but a, a lot of the emails, I got more emails than phone calls with this particular concern, was that they didn't know that this plan was moving forward. And, and I was like, well, how can that be? Like, we talk about it all the time, but I know that not everybody is as plugged into these, these, um, super invigorating meetings that we sometimes have. And so I think that, that it's, it's important that moving forward, if, if we decide to not put it on the ballot in May, that we do a much better job hosting and getting out into the public and making sure the public really understands what it is that, that we're asking for, why we're asking for that, how that's going to affect our kids, how that's going to affect you as community members. It also gives us time to start looking maybe for some creative funding from the state. The, the, we're not going to get the, the funding like Berkshire did. That's just never going to happen. But there are other things that we can explore that I think we have time now to, and just to, to speak to that other point, I have zero intention of putting this on the ballot in August, like, a zero intention. I didn't even know it was a thing. I would, I would promise my right hand, which is not really all that functional right now, but you could have it. And you were like, I have zero intention of, of doing that. So I can't speak for everyone else. I didn't even know it was a thing, so.
Well, I think there's a lot, and I think, first of all, deciding whether or not we put it on the ballot is one thing, and then discussing in detail the next steps forward is another. I think there's a number of issues going on here. Number one, timing is not good. The cost, it's a lot for this community. It's wonderful that the parents are, you know, for it. I would expect that, but we do have a lot of seniors. We have a lot of people, and I think one of the speakers mentioned that they're very stressed. I mean, that's probably an understatement. So I'd say timing. I think cost. I think somebody said tonight, you know, part of, part of the issue is that there was a planning group that did this, but it was so long ago, relative to what we're doing, that I think it's easy to lose sight of what the community really wants. It almost, again, I don't want to get into too much, like, next steps, because that's going to get a lot more complicated. But, but we have to think about those things. I think we have to think about our levies. How do they fit into this whole thing? I mean, we, you know, I have a lot of questions about that myself, but we'll, we'll look at that. And to be honest, you know, you can't do something like this without a lot of trust, and it certainly sounds to me like some of the feedback I've gotten, some of the emails, some of, some of what we heard tonight, you know, that's lacking, and that is a, it's a big hurdle and something we're going to have to fix. I know our, Christina sort of laid it out there for, in terms of where her heart's at, you know, so it's, I don't think that's an issue. It's just that, for some reason, this hasn't been communicated in the way that it should have been. And maybe the plan wasn't put together in the way it should have been. So we have to take a new look, so I will definitely support not putting it on the ballot. I'm not much in favor of putting something on that we are pretty certain, based on feedback that I've gotten, not just tonight, but in general, it's not going to pass. So that, that's, that's silly. So we need, you know, another levy committee. You know, we, we are limited into what we can do. Once we do put a bond on, we can give information, we can give facts. We cannot support or, you know, we can't bias it in any way. So it's very important for a community like this to have people from the community who get very engaged early on and then can be the levy committee, and I think that. So timing, it's, it's just not a good time. So I am definitely going to vote to take it off.
Dr. Beers, do you have anything to say?
I think probably most of the points have already been made that I have been thinking about, and in particular, it gets back to details and communication, because the questions that I saw were around that. It wasn't so much a matter of even is it needed, but show me the details that we haven't seen. And lots of good questions being asked. And there's an education portion that needs to be done that hasn't been done, didn't get started early enough, I'll say, broadly enough. The whole process has been going on for many years, what with interruptions and whatnot. I understand that the costs are going to go up with, in the next year, just like they have in the last year, but I also don't think that with all of the other financial things that are going on with the schools right now and how the state is changing the way that we're getting funded, I think we need new buildings. We've got an awful lot of repair stuff that needs to be done, but our number one concern has to be in educating the kids. And if that means we've got to put the building on hold to make sure that the education gets done, I wish that weren't the case, but I'm afraid that it sort of is. And I would also loudly echo, I am not interested in putting any special election on in August.
Me either. I wouldn't approve that.
I'll agree with that as well. It's been mentioned that this has gone on for a long time from several people, and I think that we all acknowledge that, but that we started out during COVID. We had a very good group of people who were coming in, meeting regularly. There were reasons for delays, among them, looking at different sorts of funding, too. And we had to do the research on that. We also had, and I don't know when it came into effect, but that we could not use our superintendent and treasurer to inform people in the community. There's a state law that we can't do that. So how can we use people who are most knowledgeable?
In our role.
In our role, too. I mean, we are limited in what we can do, and a lot of people don't know that, but to be able, to not be able to use in community meetings, two of the people who are most educated about what goes on in the school system and, and with the funding is, is, ties our hands considerably. And they do that because they're saying, well, here are people who are, who are going to benefit financially from supposedly from a levy or bond issue going up, and yet they, their, their hands are tied to help us. So I think that is something that, that anybody who says we've gone back and forth has not been paying attention to the fact that we've had a lot of things that, back burner, that we've had to deal with, and we've also had to look at, how do we best communicate this? The comments that were made, I think, were right on target as far as better information to the community. We haven't had a bond. We have no bonded indebtedness. I mean, I've been on the board, as you know, for a long time, and, and we haven't built anything new for quite some time. And I think the, the comments about using and utilizing people in, in the community and bringing groups back together to, to help us, to take a look at how we go about doing that is, is right on target. So I'm, I'm also getting the comments of people not understanding. We, we've had, you know, in the past, when we've had levies, we've had people who've come forward and wanted to help, wanted to, they're eager to be out there and helping. And we've got people who are supportive of the schools, but it's, it hasn't come in the droves of volunteers coming forward to say, yeah, I'll be glad to head up the committees. And that is something that speaks loud to us of just how eager, and I think having a senior population that is from the time I came on the board years ago, went from 75% of people who had kids in school to 75% who are, who don't now, is something that we need to be very clear and very careful about. So I, again, August, no. And I think that we need to sit back and take a look.
And to clarify, and just so I know too, you said something, Kathy. I know that the treasurer and superintendent can't, you know, get involved. That's once a bond is, right. Once the bond is off as an issue, then we're open to openly, and should be discussing, just that they are, they can do that.
We're allowed to provide facts. We just can't support a levy.
And, and just, I mean, Karen brought up earlier, we're talking about the different kinds of levies that we have on the ballot, and we had comments about emergency. We have no choice. That's what it's called. It's called an emergency levy. I mean, that is, that's the, and it doesn't have to be an emergency. I mean, that type of levy, correct, has that terminology.
It does.
So you don't have to, you don't declare necessarily an emergency, but that's what it's called. We don't have any choice about that.
Can you call the roll, please? Ms. Sherwood? I'm voting yes. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
So we're voting yes to see.
We're, we're voting, wait.
We're voting.
We're voting yes to remove it from the ballot.
Yes, to remove it. Yes.
Ms. Claypool?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman and Walsh? Ms. Levermore?
Yes, reluctantly, yes.
You want me to do the next one, too? All right. Resolution 105 is a resolution to deny a Step 4 grievance regarding Dorothy Miller on behalf of the West Jaga Transportation Department drivers.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Claypool?
I'm, I'm going to abstain because I was not here in February, so I didn't hear the.
Ms. Coleman and Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levermore?
Yes.
Ms. Sherwood?
Yes. Okay. Discussion of new business and suggestions to be included on future agenda. Um, hold on, I'm, I'm editing, buffering a little. Um, we've heard a lot about the, the tax commission and all the nifty little soundbites they provided about our cash balances. One of the things that people are not mentioning, though, is the Jaga County Prosecutor's opinion that we are not being irresponsible with our cash, that we are, in fact, handling it very well, and that's something that a lot of, well, everybody that I've seen has missed. I was at that meeting. It was not fun. We, there are 88 counties in the state of Ohio. Jaga County is the only county in the state of Ohio that's done this for any school district, period. So I would just, again, just because it's on the Facebook or on some, sorry, on some other thing, doesn't always mean that, that the facts are aligning to give an accurate picture of what's happening. I would encourage people to continually attend board meetings. This is where the business happens, and you get the most information, most accurate information, because it's here, live, and we're doing it in person. And we will continue to do what we can. Our cash balances are necessary to our five-year health, and those are the balances that, based on where they are, trigger the need for new, new operating levies, which we have not asked for in a very long time. And the surplus that we have now, in part, came from our merger with Newberry, and people would be best served to remember that as well, that this is not a hoarding situation like Mr. Hitchcock has, has stated. That is his opinion. He is entitled to it. We are all entitled to it. I think he's wrong. That's my opinion.
I think it would help if we shared and updated our, our capital project list and our nonroutine maintenance, because there, we have quite a list of things that need to be done.
Nonroutine is super important, too, because that's what we've been getting done a lot.
Yeah, nonroutine, exactly. Nonroutine maintenance is very important, as well as capital projects, so that, and I think it'd be good for us to, to see that again. I know we've looked at it a couple of times, Scott, but, because it's quite a list, and it's stuff outside of the new building, anything like that, just stuff that needs to be done. I think it's, I think it would be good for the public to see.
Yeah, I think if we have something for the next board meeting for our nonroutine expenses that we've incurred, that we were like, holy smokes, that's not what we were planning.
You mean like the boiler that failed, that we didn't have planned failure?
Exactly, like the boiler that failed, yeah.
And, you know, and that list is around, you know, $10 million is what the board is committed to. They prioritize that, that list, so that's around $10 million. Again, that doesn't get spent in one year. That's spent over time, because these projects take a long time.
Because it's part of our five-year forecast.
Part of our five-year forecast. So we are, you know, the Budget Commission looks at one year. That's all they look at. That's all they said they would look at. So the five-year forecast and what we look at and what we're doing, particularly in our capital needs, is not part of their presentation.
Yeah, it'd be good to look at that.
Okay.
Another thing about the, the Budget Commission is that they are looking at a calendar year, expenses, and the school's financial year, fiscal year, is July to July.
July to June.
Or June, right. And that gets things a little bit difficult.
Complicates things.
Complicate things when you're trying to figure out what money is where and keeping track of it. And that came out as well in, in some of the meetings that we had with the Budget Commissioners.
I had one more thing, remember, on the meeting. Do I do that now? Request a change in?
Oh, yeah, you can do that now.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the board would be okay with moving our May meeting from the 12th to the 19th.
I have no problem with that.
I didn't hear.
Moving our May 12th meeting to May 19th.
That should be all right.
Okay.
Done.
Thank you.
Sure. Dr. Markward?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I just, well, I don't know where, can we also put on, on a future discussion of, our discussing vouchers and where we stand and whether we would join?
The Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit. Yeah, we could put that on for, yeah, for sure. Did you get that, Karen?
Yes, ma'am. So we'll have, and presentations coming up, capital, nonroutine items and the voucher, and then we're moving the meeting from the 12th to the 19th.
I think in terms of vouchers, too, I think, look, taking a hard look at, you know, we have had a lot of people leave, or students leave this year especially, and maybe need to be questioning what's going on with that.
Yeah, I think that'll be good.
We need to do an internal review of that, I think.
My turn. My turn now. All right. I'd just like to point out that we do have a new banner from the Ohio Department of Education. It's an overall five-star award banner. This is significant, but it's more significant than what that banner shows, and I'm just going to do a little bit of a deeper dive into that. I believe that the, the Ohio Department of Education moved away from grading school districts to giving stars. Like, we can't figure out what the stars would correlate to if they were a letter grade, okay? But five star is the highest grade that one can receive. And I believe that there are 68 school districts in the state out of 607 school districts that received five-star awards. So you'll hear about it from a lot of different school districts, and you'll think, oh, that's not so, you know, top 68, big deal. But it's different than that, because if you look at the number of, if you look at those 68 schools, I believe that there are only 18 school districts in the state that have not only five stars, but stars in every subcomponent of those five stars. And of those 18, which I'm a little fuzzy on that number, but I, I'm pretty sure I'm correct on that, there are only seven who have five-star rating, stars in all the subcomponents, and are in the top 10 school districts in the state in terms of performance index, and we're one of those seven. So I, I feel really, I feel proud of that. I, I don't want to appear boastful about that, because it's certainly not the work of, of one individual or five individuals. It's the work of hundreds of individuals who've all worked together, who've put this in place. One of the things that came out of the Budget Commission that was nonfiscal in nature, that I did appreciate their acknowledging, was they repeatedly stated they're impressed, they're, they're, they're being impressed with the quality of education being offered in West Jaga schools. So I'm, I'm proud of that. And it's a tip of the hat to the administrative team that's worked with me, to all the teachers and the support staff who've made this happen, because you can't turn a district from being in the, you know, 133rd in the state to being 10th in the state consistently over a period of 10 years, unless you have a lot of people helping to, to make that happen. And I'd also like to thank the board, because I know your job is somewhat of a thankless job. You don't get paid for, very much for what you do, and I know that you take a lot of heat. And I realize that much of what the public sees in terms of your efforts really is not indicative of, of the issues that you guys wrestle with mentally and emotionally when it comes to doing the best things for the schools. And, and I see that, and I don't think that sometimes other people can get as clear a view of that. That being said, the Ohio School Board Association has sent us a notice recently that they want to honor two of our board members for lifelong service, both locally and also, and Kathy, in your case, at the State Board of Education. At the regional conference, which, the regional spring conference, which is being held later this week, they wish to recognize and acknowledge and present awards to Dr. Bill Beers and Kathy Levermore for the work that they've done on behalf of Ohio's kids. So several of us are going there to be with you when you receive that honor, and congratulations.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay. Any board reports? We've been pretty clear. Okay, so we are going to adjourn into executive session for personnel matters, appointment and/or employment, and then there will also be conference with legal counsel concerning current or possible litigation. We're going to be inviting to the second part of that Rebecca Princehorn over the phone. Are you, who's coming in for, well, for the first part with, Mr. Vidmar, for the first part, he's coming in?
The board will go with Mr. Vidmar first.
Right, and then, are, right, are you coming into the?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Markward and Dr. Benacasa? Okay. All righty, guys.
All righty, guys.
All right, 8:47, so I got Rebecca. Y'all make that.
On my watch.
I'm trying to pull up all the pictures.
Did he give me the thumbs up? Okay, we are back. We are back in session at 9:49 PM. And we are going to, do I have a resolution to adjourn? Move to adjourn?
The move will adjourn.
Second.
Can you call the roll please?
Yes. It's a Sherwood.
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
This is Spiegel.
Yes.